The Lindbergh School's Board of Education Special Workshop 1553 is now called to order. Item 2.0, Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
3.0, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 6-0. We will move to 4.01, our 2223 budget goal setting. Chief?
30 minutes.
I really am starting it. Unless you want to put it on the screen for me, and then I'll... No, just open. Over here.
Is your presentation in Board docs?
Yeah, it should be, yep.
Is it? This one right here is in Board docs?
It says "Presentation link."
It is, alright.
Andrea always does great, so I know it's in there. And I said to Colin too, so... Okay, here we are this time of year again. It comes fast, and you know, this is preliminary, and we're presenting it now so we can do more work to bring the final adopted in June. And then we had two board meetings in June, which I appreciate because a lot happens between now and June. And then there's some things that we can only do once a year. One of those things is move money from operations into capital. And if we know what we have in the bank at the last day, we make those choices. That's how we get money to buy our property and things like that. So, thank you for seeing me twice in June. I'm starting this... I wanted to start on the... Could you go back one? Because I do want to start with my yellow on this screen, and it's Budget Outlook for next year. And I just put assumptions on here, which I always do, but I put them in yellow this time. Just meeting with about our biggest revenue sources. We're always, every year with our budget, when we adopt it, we are using assumptions, because none of the hard data comes until after our budget is adopted. We know, we don't know student attendance until school ends, and Michelle McRoy does her magic up there, and then we report to the state, and we see what our attendance is. We don't know our assessed valuation data until September, you know, late August, and we have to set a levy in September. And so, we are always using assumptions when we bring a final budget for you to adopt. And then as we learn more about what's happening, as the things happen, and we have hard numbers, or we have hard data, then we make adjustments, you know, bring amendments to the board to make adjustments to the budget. The other thing is, legislation session has not closed yet. There are a couple of things on the list that could help us, but will they pass? And then what will the governor adopt in his budget? Those are things that we don't know today. Some of those things that we hear about will be great if they happen. And then, we haven't closed our books yet, and so, there's a lot of assumptions. Can go to the next one. So, like I said, we have a workshop each spring. We bring this to the board, and then final in June. We'll always bring the changes to you through budget amendments. You guys see that when we are spending something that we hadn't planned for. We usually don't amend revenue because we... This year, we might. We might have a situation to amend revenue because it's going to be higher than we projected, but things are uncertain right now. We always align our budget to the compass goals, so everything you see in here will be our work that we have in the compass goals that get presented next, and that's why we like to do these two meetings together. On the financial side, of course, we always want to be fiscally responsible, good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, offer competitive wage, salary, and benefit package, maintain reasonable class sizes, plan for enrollment growth, be operational efficiency in all areas that's continuous, and then strategic spend down of reserves. We've done that in the past couple of years by buying property that really will need with our growth. Our goal, when I put underline under "goal," is for our new revenue coming in, and this is very simple side, like I say, new in revenue. What is our new revenue going to be? And then new out. So, if you get a raise at home, and you're going to make another $2,000 this year, then you want your new expenditures going out to be the same. And that is our goal every year when we sit down. It's how much are we going to spend? We want to spend everything we have new because we want to invest in our staff, invest in our programs. And so, we really work through our process of making sure that what we have new money in, we invest in ourselves. So, that's our goal. I want to talk a little bit about reserve funds. Why do we have reserve funds? Our reserve funds are down in capital because we have bought some property, and in operating because of the pandemic. So, why do we have reserve funds? You guys know, to avoid borrowing for payroll. You know, we have a reserve number on June 30th, when our fiscal year ends. But in November is when you see me shaking in my pants saying, "God, how much money's in the bank?" Because we live on, you know, our biggest source of revenue is the tax dollars, so we live on that paycheck from the state we get in January. We live on that all the way through the next January, and that's our largest source of revenue. So, we need money in the bank to be able to make it through our lowest points in the year. Pay for unexpected costs. That has happened a lot in the last two years. We've had unexpected costs because of pandemic. Cover revenue shortfalls. That has happened. When the pandemic started, that first March, the state had a large withholding. They said, "We're going to withhold your money because we don't have money to cover everybody's expenses." So, when we adopted that year's budget, it was a major withholding from the state. Recover from an extreme event. Bingo, that's when we're on right now. Fund anticipated projects, and then also, your reserve, they look at it just like in your credit report. When you go to get a mortgage or a loan, they look at what our fund balances are and if we're being responsible. So, that's why we have it. This is just a visual of what I just explained, that the top slide is our revenue. It's an example of when our revenue comes in, and you can see our revenue comes in right there between December and January. The rest of the year, we get our state money and some other sources, but the majority of our revenue is received at that time. And then the bottom is just a picture of our fund balance. So, as you can see, in January and December, our fund balance is high, and then we draw down all the way to the lowest point in between November and December, waiting for that next big tax money. So, capital fund balance, there's operating fund balance, and then there's capital fund balance. And here's some pictures of why capital fund balance is important to help us do property. You like the... There's an Amish. I don't know, not from the district. I just got him off of WordArt. I had to make it look a little pretty, like you guys' presentation. Okay, so the next slide. And then this is our fund balance policy, which we did adopt, and it is in our board policies about the goals behind our fund balance policy, our framework, where we want to keep it, and the why. So, this year, well, here's just a quick picture of where our revenue comes from. Look at the local side. All the green is everything that I just talked about, that big paycheck in January. That's where most of our money comes from. Assessed valuation in the district, personal property, commercial property, residential property, and the small agricultural we have. We have a little bit. And then state, those are our two biggest revenue sources. We set our tax rate every September, and that is, we use the tax rate to get the dollars from our assessed valuation. I'm predicting for this next year that the tax rate is going to be very similar to the current tax rate because assessed valuation is not going to grow in a non-reassessment year. I'm hoping that we can... There was an error made at the St. Louis County level, you guys remember? Our final assessed valuation in December was $25 million less than what they told it would be in August when we set our rate. And after some investigation, they're like, "Oh, we just didn't have all the data in August." But because of that, we rolled our levy back too far, so they're going to let us recapture that next year. So, I'm hoping it may be higher by a few cents, but that's an exception due to an error at the county level. Next, we talk about inflation. That's always important because our levy and how much we can levy is based on the inflation rate. So, this slide, I know it keeps getting longer and longer, but I like to keep years' history in there, shows our inflation rate historically. And if you look at actual growth number there, that is actual growth in assessed valuation. So, assessed valuation fell really far in the housing bust of 2008, and it was a minus. It kept going down. And that was when the last tax levy was passed by the district because if not, assessed valuation fell so far that jobs were going to have to be cut. Then it shows historically on a reassessment year what we get. If you look in 1920, it was a 17.58% increase in assessed valuation. That was really how long it took to get back from the housing bust of 2008. But we are limited by inflation. So, even though on that reassessment year, the average assessed valuation in the district went up almost 18%, we could only grow 1.9% because we are limited by the inflation rate. Every February, inflation rate of a vast amount of products and services is shared, and DUCI sends us a number that we can grow by. So, that second number is over the years, the inflation rate that has been used to help us set the levy. So, look at this year or the next year coming up, our new budget. It's something that's never happened before, but the inflation rate for next year in setting the budget is 7%. You can go back and look at the inflation rate for districts all the way back to 1986, and it has never been this high. So, I'm sure prior to that, it's, this is a record. We're in a weird, uncertain time. But we're also in a non-reassessment year. So, in a non-reassessment year, you can look at how much we grow on the yellows in a non-reassessment year, very, very little. .6, .8, .9, negative .35. So, we're limited to that number for this coming up school year. So, we'd grade if we could grow 7% because of inflation, but we're limited to whatever that number is. And we will get that number in August. I have no idea what the number is going to be, Dr. Lake. Can I have a bet of where it's going to be? I'm looking at historical numbers, and he's being very optimistic.
I don't lose, Joelle.
I know. Well, we'll have to put something on the table, so we have some witnesses. But we don't know what that is, and we won't know until August. So, that's very uncertain.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I know that it's not, there's not a lot of growth there at all, but is there any chance that even though it's a non-assessment year, the county is going to look and say, "House prices are insane right now." Let's assume there's some growth, or will they just not do that?
They don't do anything in non-reassessment years.
Okay.
I mean, to your point, they, I mean, they could. They're just not... Typically, in non-reassessment years, it's little to none. And, Joelle, also, we have to always take the lower of the two.
Yeah, right.
So, if you look at last year, on the reassessment year, it was 6.75. Well, that's a decent, that's a nice growth. If you match that with a 7%. So, next year, if it's 7% in a reassessment year, that's significant, but I don't know if we're ever going to be lucky enough to have that happen for us or not.
I would love to see the next year be a 7% assessed valuation growth, or 6.5, 7% assessed valuation, and inflation. Now, inflation's everywhere else too, so I don't know if we want that to stay at 7. But as you can see, we're always on the losing side. You always have to take the lower number. And so, a lot of times, there's a misnomer that when you see your taxes go up at home, that the district is benefiting from that increase. And it's not, because we have to lower our levy, and we can only grow by what the inflation rate is. So, this is the biggest component, I think, to know about because it affects the most of our revenue. 90% of our revenue is from the local. This is just this year's budget, just kind of a summary of where we're at right now on the revenue side. We don't expect to hit our budget on the revenue side this year. And as you can see, right here, you can see the difference of projections. It's about 1.5 million. There are some things, like if you look at that M&amp;M surcharge there. That is a tax on utilities, or they give you so much per utilities, and you don't even have the calculation. They just send it to you what it is. I use a three-year average on that, and we've been very good with our three-year averages on that area. This year, look at how much it was down. We're down like almost $600,000 in that M&amp;M surcharge. You know, I've never been off on my three-year estimates in that, and it's like, what is happening? What happened in the economy that is charging that to us to lose that? I'll tell you, next year, I'm budgeting the same as I did in the past, which was that three-year amount, because this just looks like an anomaly. There's so many anomalies in our finance world right now as far as school districts and municipalities that you just don't know where to go when you're doing a budget. The other one, we're waiting on financial, but our current property tax, I will tell you, that difference is because our assessed valuation went down in December because the county made an error and says, "Oh, we just didn't have it right in August." So, they're impacting us. But we can get that back next year by doing some things, another calculation, that they'll pay us back for that. So, we're not expecting to hit in these areas. Maybe we will, but right now, I think it's just a good thing to say we might not. Next. And this just talks about, on our local tax side, we're expecting minimal growth. We will get some new construction. You know, Dr. Lake had a good example of the Bass Pro versus the old toy store. I mean, there's going to be a valuation increase in that, and that is considered new construction. That property was there, but its value has gone up, and they'll give us some money for that. We are at the lowest residential tax rate, St. Louis County. If you go back to our other screen, you can see that we've rolled back, rolled back, rolled back. We can't roll back anymore. We are at the levy, the minimum levy for St. Louis County as far as our residential rate goes. Non-reassessment year and high inflation. This is our state operating this year. And you look, we have some minuses on that side. A lot of this has to do with attendance and the pandemic. It's really all of that, attendance and the pandemic. Estimating, we have not grown, you know, Lindbergh has normally grown in attendance. I've been here five years, and for four years, there's always been growth, you know, and that adds money to our budget. Right now, our attendance is lower than it was because of, you don't get paid on enrollment, you get paid on how much they attend. So, although our enrollment is back to normal, our attendance is not. Omnicron, what do you want to say? You know, our attendance is not. So, we are not, probably not going to hit our marker in that area either. So, for next year, for the state formula, we're looking at flat funding, so I'm not predicting any revenue increase in that because actually, we are going to use our attendance data from 1920. The state is allowing, due to the pandemic, and it's not just a Lindbergh thing. This is all schools in the state of Missouri are hitting the same wall. 19, yeah, yeah, sorry. 1920 school year. Good, good question, good question.
1920 school.
The 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Yep. The state has made an exception to all schools this year, letting them use, you know, that was, we say, before COVID, after COVID. That's what we talk about a lot on our budget. They're letting us use, that was actually the COVID year, so they should let us go back to the year before that if it was higher. But, so they're letting us use that attendance because they know it's going to be lower. And so, if you use the same attendance you used in 1920 that we're going to use this year, we're not seeing any growth. They are talking about transportation funding increase. I've put a moderate amount in there. Dr. Lake is very optimistic about what's going to get passed this week as far as that goes. There's rumor that they're going to fully fund transportation, which has never happened in my 25-year career, ever. Right now, the transportation is supposed to be funded 75% of your eligible expenditures. We spend over $2 million in transportation, and you're supposed to get 75% of that. This year, we're getting like 30% of it. So, 30% of that, 75%. So, they take the $2 million, times 75%, and then they reduce it again. So, we're getting like $300,000 on a $2 million budget. Dr. Lake says they're going to give us $2 million next year, so I hope so.
I didn't say $2 million, because you still have to go and get 70% of that, and we have to become more efficient in order to get better.
Yeah, but I hope so. It's very optimistic, and that word is out there, that that's how they're going to help schools. And then there is some growth in the state as far as sales tax. People are spending money. State collects a one-cent sales tax across Missouri, and then they send that to schools based on your attendance. So, we do have some small increases. This is an illustration of future, not next year, but kind of what we're dealing with that I just want the board to recognize in the community, that the state has to do something about the attendance issue and the funding formula. So, we're getting to use that 6,726. That's our average daily attendance, plus we get some money for ELL. That's the number they're going to let us use this year, even though we're going into the 2223 year. If we had to use our current year, I'm estimating our current year based on some data, at about 6,528. If we had to use the 6,528, not the 6,639, that would be a $1.3 million cut in our state formula. If we have to, you know, usually, they let you use a second proceeding year. They're making that exception to let us use that this year and keeping it flat, because that's what we used on our budget that we're currently in. So, if they continue with their normal trend, then next year, we'd have to go to the 6,352, which means a $1.8 million cut. So, until the state decides how they're going to help schools get through this, it's not, I saw a Kansas article, it's happening there. They do theirs once a year. They look at their attendance, and they get that money. So, this is years out. This is a risk if the state doesn't act. So, we need to get with our legislators next year and get this fixed. And this is pure pandemic. This has only happened because of the pandemic. Normally, what we see on Lindbergh is that number go up about 100 per year. And that has been the trend for at least last 10 to 12 years. And when that number goes up, then that generates revenue for us. But right now, we're just keeping it flat. So, no new revenue in this area for next year. So, that's the revenue side, which is kind of bleak. We'll see what state pulls out in the next two weeks when they finish up the session. Hopefully, something to help us. And if they do, then we will amend this before June. And if it happens after June, we will amend it after June. But we're taking the, I guess, conservative approach right now because there's so much uncertainty that I don't want to be overly optimistic, and I don't want to be overly pessimistic. So, we're taking a conservative approach on our revenue for next year, based on what we know today. So, on the expenditure side, these are our major categories. We have the operating fund, then we have debt and capital. Reminder that our operating fund is how we live day-to-day, salaries, supplies, utilities. 78% of that budget is wages and benefits. So, we invest in people. I showed you the goal at the beginning of the slide that annually our goal is, and we've been able to keep that goal for years and years and years in the Lindbergh District and in my full tenure, is to have revenue and match expenditures out. This year, we're not going to meet our goal at this time. Dr. Lake and I are also thinking, you know, we're optimistic that, you know, if this transportation thing happens, then that balance is going to get better. But right now, as of today, we don't know any solutions to these issues that have come about due to COVID. So, right now, our budget is not balanced. Our expenditures are a little bit higher than our revenue, and this is not something that happened before. It's, other districts are presenting the same exact thing that I'm presenting. You know, all of our districts around us are presenting this same kind of slide. So, it's not just a Lindbergh issue. So, our expenditures are really in the major categories that I have put in the budget is salaries and wages as an average 3% across the board. We did do some benchmarking in the support position area, as I shared that last week with you guys about our support positions and where we're at at space pay on those. We're pretty much at minimum wage at our support positions, like building assistants and custodians, and all those support personnel are at minimum wage. So, and you know, we're having trouble hiring people with that because you know what Dearburg's paying. For somebody to come in and cash now, it's an $18 pay. So, we would like to, you know, make some progress away from the minimum wage, or slightly, we're slightly above it, but somewhere between where we're at now and that 18. We wish we could give everybody $18 today, but that is not going to happen. As you can see, we're not balanced. But we need to make some progress on that to get our buildings staffed and take the load off of everybody who's filling in for them. Building principals are filling in for building assistants. And you know, so then it snowballs, you know, what's not getting done. So, that's a part of this budget. We've also put in the budget some inflationary pricing. We all know that there's been supply chain issues. Inflation is 7%. One of the items that we're pretty sure is going to happen because we got notice from our paper company, which we don't use a lot of paper anymore, let me just say that, is that there's going to be a 36% increase in paper price this year. Yep. So, luckily, we've already been, done some efficiencies on paper, but we still need paper to operate. There's a lot of things. And that is major. And that's not the only component. There's facilities, instructional stuff, that is all very priced up. So, we've accounted for that in our budget as well. And then, we do have, in our budget, knowing all of that kind of not happy stuff above, we did have some staff ads and look at growth for programming, growth, things that we need on the teaching, learning side to help and enhance our programs. We did not take any of that out. We want to continue and put that in. We always have efficiencies. If you want to take a look in the compass goals under the business section, you'll see there's completed or ongoing efficiencies in the past four years. We've looked at things in detail, and we've taken that money that we've repurposed out of becoming more efficient, let's say in transportation, or let's say in copies, and we've repurposed that into salaries. So, there's a whole list of the things that we've done for the last four years in that area. We haven't stopped. Every year, we look at more efficiencies. We'll revisit old efficiencies and just try to keep recouping, saving dollars to invest in new programs. And then this year, we do have reduced cost and benefits. We went out to a new broker for the first time in a long time, and tweaked that. I have to thank the HR department and that team when we had a reduced cost and benefits premiums this year. That is unseen in any other district. The fact that Lindbergh has been, not had increases in a long time is amazing, but we actually had a small decrease, so that's good. This year, unfortunately, but it's common in the marketplace, we have a lot of teachers leaving the profession or just retiring. I think our number, Brian Schleff, I think we're at 21 of our teachers leaving, you know, and when they leave, making top-scale dollars, and we replace them with somebody just out of school or a couple of years out of school. Of course, there's the savings in our cost of salary and benefits. So, we had that big chunk of money this year to those retirements to invest back in the salary schedule. So, a big reason why we're getting able to make some increases with our instructional staff and support people without having new revenue is because our expenditure has gone down due to just changing in tenure on staff. So, that has been really helpful this year, even though we hate seeing all the people jump out of the profession and do things like that. Or retire, or they're just done. They're just done with the COVID. And then a goal is, like Dr. Lake said, to always look at how much money we have at the end and replenish like our capital balance, or add more money to our savings just for times like these when we have to reduce it. Okay, next slide. So, here's the picture that I don't want to bring to the screen, but this is where we're looking at. This year, our goal, you know, to make these two match right at this point in time is not something that we're going to put on the table. Will we receive more information between now and June that changes this number? Will we receive information between now and December that changes this number? We are hopeful that the state will come up with something, our assessed valuation will come in higher than we think, and these will balance out. But at this time, there's just so much uncertainty. We're not confident of putting those numbers there. So, we're looking at new revenue about 550, and then we're looking at new expenditures about 2.1. And those expenditures are in the areas of wages, also added FTE, and then some of that inflation stuff that we're seeing that hopefully is temporary as well. This is a detail on the recommended ads for next year, and all our things that we don't want to take off the table. Like I said, if we wanted to balance the budget today, we could take some of these off the table. But that's not something we want to do, is sacrifice our programs and our students to balance the budget. These are all much-needed services, our positions to keep us where we need to be with servicing what we do, service kids and families. Some of these things that we did are maybe not FTE-added, but like we've taken some teaching assistants, and we're making them now, we're repurposing them into a design lab. And so, that's not a full FTE. That FTE is already there, but the rate of pay for a teaching assistant versus a teacher is a difference, so there's an increase in cost. But a lot of time is spent on this, months and months in cabinet and in compass goal work to come up with a fair add to our salaries. We do have in there what-ifs, Brian's what-ifs. What if enrollment, always in August? Like right now, we have, we know what we need, but ultimately, in August, we're going to have some people come in the door and say, "I want to go to school there," and that's going to tip some class over, you know, our matrix for class sizes, and we're going to have to add. So, if nobody comes knocking at the door in August, those positions are really our back pocket. But I haven't seen a year when it hasn't happened, has it? So, we will probably utilize them, but we're preparing for that by making that information available now. So, that's really the operating side, which I know it's not a rosy picture. It's not a picture that's been painted, you know, prior. I don't think any district wants to present a budget like this, but we think by telling you where we're at, we're being trans- But we think by telling you where we're at, we're being transparent. We're optimistic that's going to get better, but this is where we're at right now. The debt side is totally separate than operating. We do have a levy in debt service, but you can only use that levy to pay your interest and principal in the debt side. So we're not seeing any change in that debt levy for this year. We think that rate will be where it's at. The other thing that we look at, it's not debt because we borrow to pay for our improvements, but we are continuously to look at, you know, our equity in our home. When we pay off debt, we want to borrow against it to keep our facilities in shape. That's bond issue money. You know, we're getting ready to spend the last of our bond issue money right now on the high school. We've done secure vestibules. We've done everything else that we said that we were going to do. And then hopefully in, within the next 22, 23 school year for sure, that project will be complete and we have done everything that we promised the taxpayers. But we know that there's more we need to do. So this is something that we continue to look at. And this talks about a note, well, we're continuing to look at that. But we also know when this project's finished, we have a whole nother list of projects our facility advisory goes through that we want to do next. I mean, we're looking at Truman. That's the next building that needs a lot of work. We know we'd like to get campus circulation better. We'd like to get the cars off of Sabington and onto the campus in the morning and the afternoons when kids are around and walking to school. So we would like to start talking to the community about a potential no tax rate increase in 2024. After this project's done, we'll start, we have a list of projects and we'll start spreading that out to districts, to the community. So in summary, this is always our goal is compass goals, which you'll hear about is to fund those projects from last year. We set compass goals and then we fund them in the next year's budget. And then we want to be efficient in all of our operations. We want to keep planning for staff programs and facilities over the long run, not just next year, but the next five years. We want to be responsible with our fund balance. And if you haven't looked at the fund balance policy, it might be something you want to glance at. In the policy program, just to know where we lie with that. And then we want to keep up with assess valuation. So that's where we're at. I take time to answer questions. Short time.
I'm just going to say thank you for being conservative, you know, and looking ahead and planning and shuffling all the, all the different numbers.
It's not a budget, like you said, you want to present as a deficit spending budget, but I don't, you know, just don't think.
Well, I think it's important. There's just so many uncertainties, you know. Are they going to require us to use the COVID years ADA? You know, we have, can't count on the data and the information we get from our county because it's just been all over the place. And so we just feel like this and, you know, if you go back to when I started my tenure as superintendent, you know, when I came in, part of that was compensation for all of our employees. You know, how do we get better at that? And a lot of people said, well, let's go raise our levy. Let's go get a tax. And I'm like, not until we are as efficient with these dollars now. And we're still being efficient and we believe there's still years ahead before we have to do that. We think this is as a result of COVID and I think this is something that we just kind of keep our eye on. But that's also why we have the healthy reserves that we have to be able to have a budget like this every once in a while where we're going to take a really conservative that if it comes in, in that bad scenario, we still, that's why you have savings accounts. That's why you have reserves and it doesn't. And I think the important thing here is it's not impacting programs and students. We're still doing the things that we want to do with our kids, keeping our class sizes the way they are. But obviously you can't live like that forever. And that's why we have that fund balance, you know, in there as well that, okay, we've used some reserves, we got to pay ourselves back. So how are we going to pay ourselves back after two or three years? So I think it's really important that, you know, we're not impacting kids yet. We're not to a point where we feel like, oh, my gosh, we, you know, we can't do that. And we believe coming out of this, we're going to be, things will level back out the way they were with growth and all of those things as well. So.
We would be, I believe without the pandemic, we would be presenting just a totally different budget. You know, we would be on our normal trend of growth and investment, but.
But we wanted you to see this. We wanted, I mean, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we believe this is all going to correct itself, but.
How long will that take?
Yeah, how long will that take?
Because it's not, we don't have, you know, the powers to be are going to have to correct it at the, you know, state and local level to fund schools.
And if things come in, like you said, this is conservative. By June, we could be sitting here saying that, that 1.5 isn't there. I mean, we've made it up. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be.
That's the first thing that will happen is when we get the governor passes the budget and we see what he puts in there for schools. That will be the first actual data we have. Then we'll get our assess valuation data and then we'll have our attendance. So each month, we're going to know a little bit more, but we don't have any of that data right now.
Yeah. And what I would say too is, you know, Joelle made point to the last time this community did a operating levy increase will be 10 years ago, 11 years ago. So, you know, this is something we'll keep our eye on for the next couple of years. So, you know, potentially in the next two to five years, we may be talking about that because now you're looking at 13, 14, 15 years trying to live off of that budget. But we also are at the lowest tax rate you can be on residential property at 2.75. So we don't have to roll that back. So when we get, you know, CPI and things, we don't know how that, we've not experienced, we're not exactly for sure how that's going to impact.
I've never been at the lowest tax rate you can be in a district.
The budget because we don't have to roll it back. So we're, so we're just kind of in there, but we really wanted to present a conservative just outlook to you guys. So.
Can you, you kind of said the county assessor's office had an error with their valuation. Could you explain that a little more?
St. Louis County, on a reassessment year, they give us estimates of growth for all of those property categories I mentioned. So they give us an estimate in March on a reassessment year. This year, we get no estimates. We just get what we get in August, they tell us. So they gave us some data then, then they gave us some data in June, and then they gave us an assess valuation number in August. And that is the one that we, by state law and statute, we have to use to set our levy. So we took that data and of course, growth and assess valuation was higher than inflation. We're always on the losing end of it, so we had to roll back our levy. So in December, when they, you know, give you a final, final number for the year, which normally it's very, very close to what they gave you in August. I mean, it's extremely close. We got ours and there was $25 million less than what it was in August. And it's like, okay, this is a typo or something, you know, or whatever. So I reached out to the St. Louis County attorney just to find out what happened, what was the error, why are we doing this? And it really took two months, I think, for her to really get back to me on the why. And really it was like, well, we didn't have all the data we needed in August. So our records weren't right when we sent them to you in August. You know, they're correct now. I like to say as well, if you don't have all the data, maybe you could put on there like, this is an assumption, we're not caught up with our records. You know, this data is not complete. We think this is what it's going to be or something like that. So we rolled our levy back more than we had to. And so really we lost that money this year. That was money that we should have in this year's budget. And there is a way to recoup that, a whole nother process that will work with the state, the county on this year to get those cents back. But they'll be a year delayed. And so, so I'm not very confident with the data that they share with us. They also, they also gave us an estimate last year that our new construction growth was going to be 4 million and it ended up at 20 million, which saved us on that state auditor's lawsuit that they had about how taxes were set. So it worked out, but I'm not confident in the data this year.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. All right. Thanks, everybody. Any last questions? We will move to 4.02, our compass goals, and the cabinet will be presenting on each of their areas.
Beth's up first.
All right. Well, this time every year is when we bring to you our compass goals for the coming year. And so just to give you a quick refresher before we get started, the compass goals are our annual district goals report. That's part of our five-year strategic plan that you'll see here. So we always start with our why, which is excellence in learning, designing the future. And all of our compass goals and the SMART goals that you see in our, in our departments feed back up to that, that why. So if we go to the next slide, we're just going to kind of go through the sections and the structure of how this works. If you'll remember, we brought the community together three years ago now to develop that why and create our strategic plan. And then our departments go through each year and come up with the goals to support it. So the how is the guiding statement you'll see at the beginning of each section for each department. And then the what are the department SMART goals. So we all have several of those SMART goals that support the, the how for our entire department. This year, we've reworked the format of the compass just a little bit. It won't look too different, but we are formatting it to align with the Missouri School Improvement Program and IMSIP 6. So with each goal you'll see is listed here, we have a rationale, we list the funding source, and then we also list the IMSIP indicators that our goals are aligned with. So you can see how that ties into the state goals as well. Next slide. And then under each goal, you will see the action steps. So these are the steps that we're taking in our department to support our goals. You'll see with each step a start date, completion date. These typically fall into the 30, 60, 90-day plans that we like to talk about. Who's responsible and then the resources, whether that's state, local, or federal funding. One thing new that you'll also have this year, and we're excited that our community is going to have us as well, is the compass plan will link to a more detailed document for each action step. So when you read through the compass and take a look at all of our goals, you'll see kind of a more of a broad statement of what we're looking to accomplish. And that's what we're all going to highlight tonight. But then we'll be able to link from our website for you to the actual action steps that our departments are doing to accomplish those goals. So people can, will be able to dig in and look and see like, let's break this down step by step to see how we're going to accomplish the work that we're going to do. And we're just looking forward to sharing that and being as transparent as possible. And then if we go to the next slide, you will also see, this is just how we're coding the steps and this is the same as we've been doing every year. So if you see an item in green in the compass document, that's something that we're continuing from last year. If you see it in orange, that means we're moving it up. So we have our three phases of goals that are implement, research, and then investigate. And if we're moving it up from, for example, research to implement, you'll see that goal in orange. And then all the black goals are the goals that are new for 2022, 23. You'll also see in our sections, anything that we have ongoing. So if one of our departments has a goal that is something that's not necessarily ending, it's continuing year after year, we move that down into ongoing. So you can see that continued work. And then our goals that we've completed and some of our goals that we've strategically abandoned because we talk about sometimes we'll investigate something and find that that's not the right fit for our district or not something we want to move forward on. So we want to list that under abandoned to show that that was something that we looked at. Next slide. So this is also new this year. One of the things we've talked about quite a bit and we just want to be more intentional and strategic with is communicating our goals with the, with all of our community and sharing out, what is the work that we're doing, why is it important and what do people need to know? So every compass goal is going to have a communication plan to go along with it. And these are sort of like mini communication plans because as we know, my department aren't the only ones doing the communicating. In fact, most of our communication is happening from our principals, our teachers, coming out of the departments. And so we want everyone to be thoughtful about when we're coming up with these goals, who needs to know about it? So who are our audiences? And what messages do we need to share with them? What information so that they can fully understand it, fully engage with it, ask questions and support our student experience at Lindbergh? So these messages may vary by audience and they probably will. But just keeping those things in mind and as we're going through our action steps, working in, working out how we're going to let the community know as well. One thing in my department, we've been talking about, and I'll mention it in our goals, but is, for example, how can we be more structured even with our community updates? So having a teaching and learning update and student services update, Board of Education update, in addition to those weekly principal e-notes that are going out to be. And that will be one of the tools that everyone else on cabinet in their departments can use to communicate out. So you see some of those listed up there. Any questions on the detailed document or the communications plan? Any of the changes that we're looking at? Okay. Well, I will go right into communications. So as a reminder, our how is to engage and inform the Lindbergh community to cultivate support, understanding, trust, and confidence through open, honest communication. And if we move on from the how, like I mentioned, we're all going to highlight our whats and then some, some of our goals. This isn't the document in full, but this is just to give you guys a good overview of our work. So maintaining our strong identity and brand and building on those brand standards. One of the projects I'm most excited about that we're going to work on this summer and begin developing is designing the new entrance inside for our Lindbergh High School main lobby. And how do we put together a design that brings our entire community together, tells a story of who we are, is inclusive of everyone? And our idea that we have is to solicit photos from our community, from our publications at the high school, from our alumni, going all the way back. That really can be pictures of people or buildings or events that have happened in our community and build those all into a big collage on the wall. So that won't be a job just with my department. We're going to put a committee together to work on that and come up with a concept. And so we're excited to build out the timeline and, and really work on that this year for our new high school. And then you'll see in orange, this is continued over, is implementation of a logo and brand for our high school athletics department. This has taken us a little bit longer than we initially planned, but we actually are meeting, we're meeting with a group today that was, that's going to help us with this and begin building out a timeline and the people involved for creating a consistent brand for our high school athletics that can span all of our teams and organizations and talking about the mascot as well. So there's a couple other items on here as well and those are just reinforcing those consistent brands that we talked about. Next slide. And then communicating effectively with all of our audiences. That's really an important thing for us as well, whether it's families, whether it's our staff, our, our community, business partners, to just make sure that they understand who we are, what we're about, what our priorities are and our values. And so one thing we've talked about is working with Dr. Lake and with all of you and our administration to really reinstate the in-person connections that we've missed during COVID and create and find opportunities to get out in the community with our parent groups, with our staff, but also with our senior citizens and our business partners and chambers and just visiting groups and talking to them about our work and, and sharing our goals and answering questions. And so just finding out what our community is caring about and reestablishing those connections. And then this I alluded to before, but just strategically reorganizing our editorial calendar. So all of the publications that we send out and all the communication that we do so that we're being really intentional about communicating our compass work and doing that over, over time throughout the year. Next slide. And our final goal in communications, our final what is engaging our community in support of our initiatives. This goes, this connects to our other goals as well, but through in-person opportunities, district events and ways to provide support. This goal is really how we engage our Lindbergh Schools Foundation as well, which falls under our department. And so two goals this year, just to highlight is continuing, as we bring our senior citizens back in our senior associates program following COVID, having a hiatus there, how can we be strategic about continuing to build that program and make it, adapt it to our senior citizens of today? So our senior citizen group had been getting a little bit older and we want to continue to engage those people, but bring in our new seniors as well in ways that are valuable for them. And then continuing to implement a plan for grand opening for Lindbergh High School and our district's 75th anniversary that's coming up. Any questions? All right. It was my pleasure to introduce Brian McKinney, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thank you. Well, Beth did a good job of introducing, I think, all of our goals. So I won't spend a lot of time on, on, on why we have it set up the way we do. But I would say that the how on, on human resources states very precisely in a very short sentence that the district will recruit, retain, and support a premier workforce. So that's a very few words with big implications. So we unpacked that to develop our compass section. So we unpacked that to develop our compass section into four sections. Section one is focused on the work of retention. We want to keep our terrific staff currently serving the district. Section two is focused on our recruitment efforts to build on and enhance the premier workforce. Section three focus is on support. How do we ensure our employees' basic needs are being met so they can be focused and successful? And section four was added this year. This is a compliance goal, but it does impact the district from an MSIP VI standpoint. It's, it's rooted in compliance with Missouri Bill, Missouri Senate Bill 291, which requires the district to effectively develop and evaluate staff, but more importantly, it's focused on a priority need in feedback from Dr. Lake's Listening and Learning Tour, which notes that our community places a great value on high-quality teachers. And so evaluation's an important part of that, so we'll talk about that. So the first slide focuses on the retention section, and these are just some of the work of the goals we'll be focused on this year, but I wanted to highlight a few. The first is the Classified Leadership Training Program. This is important. We've had, as you know, changes in leadership at the classified level. I think as a, as an HR department, and certainly for teaching and learning, a great job is done training and developing our certified leaders, our principals and our, our directors. But we also want to make sure we don't forget about our classified support staff. And so this year, we will implement a supervisor training for classified leaders, and it will be a four-part series, one per quarter, and it will be focused on cultivating leadership by providing supervisors with the tools, skills, and language to improve and support their practice, building relationships among departments, so one department is not in silo away from others. And we want to establish some culture goals. We want staff at the classified level to feel that sense of belonging and valued, in that their voices matter, and they can, they can have an open-door policy, and their, their staff can come to them and, and feel confident that they'll be heard. So we're excited about that. The other goal in this section is, implement-wise, is Lindbergh Aspiring Principals Academy. This will begin in the upcoming year. It's, it's designed to identify and develop future leaders. It's a year-long program. There'll be multiple meetings. The program will be led by human resources and teaching and learning directors. There is a prerequisite for this program, so in order to be admitted to this program, you must have completed the Teacher Leadership Academy, which Dr. Sparks has just led. And so it's not a, an opportunity for just anyone. You have to complete that and quite rigorous program, and you also must complete an application process and be interviewed and be selected. So it's a great program, and the ultimate goal is to, is to identify people in our own organization that can be leaders in the future. I would say just one comment about that, that at times we lose good leaders because they say, "I want to go home. I want to go to my home district." Well, this is the home district for a lot of people, and if we can invite, identify those leaders that are already at their home, that's not a battle we'll have to fight. So finally, Extra Duty/Extra Pay Study Committee. We need equity in, in extra duty/extra pay opportunities. Jamie Covato will be, will be leading a committee of alleged 11 stakeholders. And the change in this is currently, extra duty/extra pay, whether it is high school football, or it's, it's elementary select choir, it all comes to one committee at the central level. And what we've determined from some research about other places and best practices is that, that buildings need to have some, some say over, over the budgets and over how those clubs work. And so the big ideas really are that the mission-related sports and activities will be the sole focus of the district-level centralized committee, and that there'll be more of a building-level approach. The building leadership teams will be making decisions about the, the building-specific clubs and activities that are really focused on their students and their communities. And this, we think, will ensure more opportunity for students, sponsors, clubs, and sports and activities. One other part of that, we will do an extensive market study on all the extra-duty pay positions, just to make sure that we are continuing to pay competitive rates, because that's important as well. Next slide. Recruitment is our next section, and a couple of things to highlight here. We have joined the Spartan Academy and the UMSL Studio. Those are two universities, Missouri Baptist and UMSL. It's a student-teaching program, but it's different than, than most in that the students will spend an entire year with Lindbergh Schools rather than just a six- or eight-week student teaching practicum. They will come in the first semester, and they'll be part-time, and they will be all around the building, learning the culture, observing different departments, different teachers, different grade levels. They will be available to, for us to use as substitute teachers. That's a win. They'll be available to aid our current teachers, and they will learn all about the culture and the students and the families of, of the building they're in. Second semester will be entirely dedicated to their student teaching, so it's a full year onsite partnership, and we get, they have to enter this program, and once they're admitted to this program, only the best students are admitted to these two programs, then we get exclusive access to those students. So this is a, a really great recruitment tool. Classified Staff Academy.
Can I ask one question about that?
Yes.
Will we be competing with other districts for those same students, or is this something just for Lindbergh?
Uh, there will be a small number of districts in these two programs, and so we will, yes, but the competition will be much smaller. It'll be a, a select group. And then we will also have a Classified Staff Academy. This is, again, we need to focus some professional learning opportunities on our classified staff. This is going to be a neat program, providing staff in the classified sector to identify an area they may want to move into and rise up in the organization, and they'll get to participate in some professional learning and some projects with departments that they have interest, which is, I think, going to be very popular. An example, that would be a building-level administrative assistant who wishes to explore a leadership role at central office in one of the, one of the four departments. Slide three, and I'm going quick, I promise, I'm moving fast here. FMLA continues to be more complicated and more of a case-by-case scenario. So we provide upon our onboarding a lot of information about FMLA. However, every situation is different, and there's, there seems to be, and I think this is true across the board, there seems to be more and more access of FMLA in recent years. So the plan here is to create a presentation that will be annual, it will be an invitation, so people who are interested will come. It won't just be a, well, you know, sit in a staff meeting and take five minutes and shoot a bunch of information. The people will say, you know, "Are you, are you expecting to take maternity leave this year?" If so, a presentation will be given, and these will be given every so often, and it'll be an opportunity for us to talk about scenarios that impact the individual, a much more personalized experience and presentation on FMLA, rather than just the federal, federal line of communication that is oftentimes not extremely helpful. So I think the scenarios will be really, really popular. Finally, in this section, our support, mental, mental health. When you look at nationwide, regional, and even our own employee engagement surveys, the research indicates an acute need for health, mental health support for employees. They're asking for it openly, again, all across the country and here at Lindbergh as well. We are fortunate that when we did our benefits broker bidding process, we hired a group called Hays Company, and they, one of the things that the committee identified about Hays and the reason they won our bid was because, one that, one that our business was because they put a great deal of focus on wellness and not just insurance coverage. So they have researched and joined us with a group called Health Source Solutions, and they are going to spend the summer taking stock of our current mental and physical health wellness programs, and then help us to, to develop a strategic plan to build on what we're already doing and identify ways we can do more. So we're excited about that this summer, and we'll unroll that out next year. Finally, this is the compliance piece that I talked about. If you could go to the next slide, please, Colin. We already have an evaluation instrument that meets the seven effective principles of educator evaluation. No, no issues there. However, we have an opportunity. It's been seven years since we put this in play. Lindbergh was a leader last time when this was developed. We were asked to come and speak at state, state conferences about our instrument, but it's been seven years since it was unrolled. And so it's time to take another look at it and make sure that we are up to speed with next practices and best practices. So Dr. Sparks identified an opportunity for us to travel to the, the Robert Marzano Highly Reliable School Summit next year, and there will be a educator evaluation focus, and we'll take some folks to that, get some great ideas, and come back and make some, some needed revisions and updates to our educator evaluation instrument. That's my presentation for this evening. Any questions? Hearing none? Going left?
I actually have, have one comment, and I'm, I'm not going to be clear on this, because Beth, this might involve you too. So as you bring some more building-specific clubs and things there, that I'm worried about the communication piece of it, because if you have different clubs that are just for one building, then right now, the communication is kind of all over the place, and as a parent of kids in two different schools, I get all these emails.
Sure.
How are we going to communicate what they're doing at the building effectively without overwhelming people with a million emails?
So what we've seen work in other districts is, right now, we feel like that the weakness in our extra-duty/extra pay program is that we have a lot of opportunities for high school students. We have a good deal of opportunities for middle-school students and very few extra-duty/extra pay clubs for elementary students. And if they do exist, they're usually outside of school, they're through community education, they're not really a school program. So what other districts have done, they set it up in levels. So you'd have elementary level of, of budgets, and so a building may have a lot of students that are really interested in archery. This is a real example. Archery became really popular after the Hunger Games movements, movement, I call it a movement, it about, was a movement, movies and books. And, and so archery blew up, and we had all these large archery programs. Well, then it kind of, it, it kind of went away again. It winked in and out of existence pretty quickly, but when it was thriving, it was in high demand. Well, the way that our, our committees are set up, it takes a few years of, of, you know, apply for it, and then maybe the first year you get a little bit of seed money, and then you, you re, you know, you let us know the next year, how did it go? And then, and by the time that really got built up, well, then they didn't really have the students to function anymore, but it's still on the books, and it's on the budget, but it doesn't exist any longer. So what a lot of districts do is they give buildings some budget for things that may kind of blow up, and they can address it for that small amount of time, and then it goes away, and they can use that money for something else. There's a lot more flexibility and agility in a situation like that. So that's the goal. There will be some, some logistics that we'll have to deal with, but the goal is to provide buildings and, and principals a little more flexibility and some money, take some money out of our budget, give it to them, and let them make some decisions at the ground level. Communication will probably be somewhat of an issue, but Beth.
Right. Well, I think you raise a good point, because this year, we looked at programs we offer during the summer, and how can we consolidate communication for all of that so that it's easier for parents to find? And I think there's a similar, we could look at that at the building level to say, are we sending out information about all of our opportunities in a consistent way? Is it easy to find? Is it organized? So I think that's something we can definitely take a look at. I know at the high school, they've moved all the activities information onto Canvas, and so that's been a way to keep it organized and updated, so I think that, that's something we can look at and improve.
Well, the agility piece is important, because what Brian described is, it's student interest. So, and I'll use an example, back when I was building principal, we had some kids that were really into Pokemon and the cards, and so they found a teacher that said, "Hey, will you supervise us after school while we do our Pokemon card stuff?" And as a building principal, I had a budget for those kinds of, and so I paid that person, you know, $250, you know, to watch those kids once a month after school while they did their thing. So it's really driven on student interest, because as their interests change, we want our elementary principals to feel like they can adjust to those where they don't really have that, and even our middle and our high schools, just having a set dollar amount that allows them to have that agility to meet student interest. So that's really the gist behind, behind that, that study, so.
I have a couple of questions about the student-teacher program.
Sure.
That's okay. Is there an estimate as to how many student teachers we would get from these programs?
It's a good question. So I believe at, so through the UMSL Studio, we already have, I think, six at the high school. UMSL Studio is only for secondary, and then the MOBAP Spartan Academy is across the board, but I think we've already got six identified for UMSL Studio, and this is the time that they're signing up right now. So that's, that's pretty quick already to have that many for, for the fall.
So do the college students that want to student teach, do they, like, apply to come to this school, or are they, like, how, how does, what's that process like?
They do. They tell, it's a little bit like we said about fellows. We used to say it was, what was it like, rushing a fraternity or sorority? So you say, "I want you," and they say, "Well, I think we want you too," and then maybe we, you know, so they have some input, and we have some input.
But the initial, it initially comes from Lindbergh? Is that what you're saying, or it?
The interest comes from the university. They have students, the six said, "I really want to be at Lindbergh," and we say, "We've got openings. Come, come see us." And the good thing about this, it's a little bit different, is these, these are really the top of the, cream of the crop, so to speak, of, of the students enrolled in the program. So if, if, if you don't get into this program, then you're not top of the, top of the class, and then you're not going to be coming to Lindbergh High School. That, that's what really appealed to us about it, was the high quality of student, grade point average, you know, they do, they, they talk about philosophy, they do some studies. Do they have potential? Do they meet the StrengthsFinder profiles that they're going to be a successful teacher in the future? So they do a lot of that work. So when we get these kids, we already feel pretty good about their potential, and then we see what happens over the course of the year. And really, the, the, the measure will be, how many of these students do we hire? That's when we know it's successful. Mizzou Fellows was wildly successful. We hired so many of those. That program's gone now, but it was somewhat like this. We hired a lot of those teachers, because we got to train them for a year. It's like a year-long test drive, so to speak, so.
And then are they, I'm assuming they're still, like, paired up with a mentor teacher?
They are.
Are the Lindbergh mentored teachers compensated for having a student teacher?
No. Well, I shouldn't say no. I'm not sure if there's compensation from the university. There's not any from us, but for the university, there, there, sometimes there is and sometimes there's not. It's a good question. I'll find out.
Okay, thanks.
It's not a lot if there, if it is, though. It's usually a, a token of their appreciation.
You, you mentioned that if we needed subs, they could serve as substitutes.
Right.
Would they get paid for doing that, or is that?
Yeah, they can be paid as subs.
They can be paid.
Yeah, and that's our rule, just so you guys know, our new rule with any student teachers that we work with is we require the university to give them permission to sub for us, or we don't, we don't. There used to be, student teachers could never sub, and we have broken that barrier through our MOU process, and just said, "That's something we have to have a right to," even if they, if they sub in that room and we move that, the other teacher somewhere, you know. The subs are in such band.
That would have been nice to have when I was student teaching, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. That's a hard, that's a hard eight to 12 weeks of no money.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and now it's my pleasure.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, it's all right.
I just want to acknowledge that we received the best place to work again. Is that correct?
We did. Top, St. Louis top workplaces, the third year in a row.
Third year in a row. So I think the retention piece, all the wonderful programs we're adding in, the wellness and, and different things, is, really helps with that, as we continue to see the great resignation out there. So I think, you know, let's give ourselves a pat on the back. Good job, and good job to all the teachers and everybody, too.
Yeah, that's exciting, it was exciting to hear, again. And every year, I think, this is a terrible year for this survey, and then, and then it hears out okay, so. Okay. Thank you again for your time. Bringing back to the podium, Joel Schi, Joel Schiwal, or as some people refer, Schiwal.
Are you going to ask me how much time you have for this one?
I'm going to be quick.
Okay.
I'm going to be so quick, I don't even have to ask about time, because I've already had my time, and really, this is just, I've talked a lot about these through my budget, because we do use compass goals when we build the budget. That's why I wanted to start with this slide, that really, compass goals under Finance and Operations are all in three categories. Maximize resources, continuously improve operational efficiencies, and ensure customer service and transparency. Everything is built under that. And then if you refer to the Finance section, the Operations section of the compass goals, you'll see Complete, a long list of Complete and Ongoing. So Beth told you the code of new or moved up, but then there's also on there Complete, and there's a lot, a long list of the last four years of what we've done to repurpose money, money through efficiencies and invest in our, our programs and our staff. So real quickly, and I'm not going to read through them, but you'll notice that a lot of these, because we've done so. of these, because we've done so much work on the big picture, a lot of these are getting into more minutia on operational efficiencies. One of the things that we looked at prior to COVID happening was expanding our enterprise programs, which are programs in our district that their fees have to cover the services. There is, you know, guidance from the state that we can make profit on those programs to a limited amount. And we want to proceed there. You know, now people can use our buildings more so we can take it outside of just use within, but coded profit and have kind of like Fox School District has their Rickman Auditorium. Soon we'll have a beautiful auditorium at the high school and we can expand some of that and get some funds for general operations. Next. This maximize resources is about investigating through the facilities advisory committee. I talked about investing in our, our facilities. That's always part of our budget and our goals. And these, we're going to continue impact studies as far as campus circulation, facility equity, you know, the buildings that have a gymateria, where the gym is the cafeteria, you know, those are all on our list in a future bond issue to build equity. So all kids have a gym, not just a gymateria. So we are going to continue data gathering that and those are things that maybe you'll see in the long run on a no tax rate bond issue. Looking forward, we're also working, we want to do some audits on our HVAC equipment district wide. HVAC's, of course, equipment is expensive to replace. We're talking 500 to a million dollars to, you know, redo a system. We know we've had some challenges in that area and we want to set some time aside to actually do some audits of what we have and how we can replace them or improve them. So that's a project. Same with roofs throughout the district. Next. This one is operational efficiencies and these are some programs that we do get funding, federal funding on. Food services and eligibility is not just for free meals, but there's other funding that comes with that. I will remind everybody that the free meals are gone effective this school year. So when last day of school is, they're saying that we'll go back to our normal, free, reduced and full price. And so that'll be a habit to get people back in, to put money into their accounts and that. But we want to make it easier. When we get back to that, we're going to have online application and then we're going to have some processes at the school to get the kids through the line and, but make sure we capture all that data because we do get funding on it. We're going to look at our ECE West property that was, houses both our ECE preschool as well as community ed. Both of those programming programs are busting at the seams. Is that building service, serving them well? We want them both to grow and so that's part of our study for next year. Our last one is investigate. We reference this again in our budget planning that we're always looking long range, long range financial, long range facilities, long range infrastructure. And so we wanted to start talking about, you know, future no tax rate increase, bond issue funding and then potentially a tax levy rate increase. I think that's me. Thank you.
All right. Beth or last? Right. It's usually Beth, so this time I get to, I get to claim it.
How many slides do you have?
I have 10, but I will, I will be efficient. I'm going to follow Joel's lead and be efficient. I do think it's important when I talk about these goals is we made some pretty major adjustments to how our goals were organized in the past. In the past, we had four goals in teaching and learning, one that really focused on social emotional learning, one on our standards based learning, our academics, one on professional learning, and then one on kind of the structures and systems. We have consolidated those into two goals going into this year. One that focuses on safe, supportive and collaborative environment, that is our social emotional learning goal, and then one that is standards based instruction. Systems and professional learning end up going underneath those broader goals. I think the other big change to note is that we have identified data markers. So as Beth referenced earlier, you know, this idea that these are smart goals, what are we actually measuring? And so adding in measurements. So as you look at this first goal about ensuring a safe, supportive and collaborative culture, when we look at that, one of the things that is going into play next year are social emotional learning screeners. And I'll talk about those a little bit more later. But what is that data going to tell us? Our goal is that 80% or more of our students are low risk for social emotional concern. We don't have a baseline. We chose 80% because when you look at tiers of intervention, tier one is what's happening in the classroom, the general environment, and 80% of students should be served in that environment. And then tier two are additional interventions and supports for students who are showing risk factors. And then tier three are more extensive supports. So 80% is the baseline we used since we don't have any other information or data going into this next year before we implement those screeners. One of the other data points that you can see here is 90% of students attending 90% or more. So Joel talked about attendance earlier. That, that particular metric is what the state uses to determine that we are really working towards consistent student attendance. So rather than an average attendance rate across the board, you want to see that individual students are attending on a regular basis. And that is an indicator that they feel safe, supportive, that they have an environment that they are comfortable learning and growing in. And then finally, in collaboration with our human resources department, it's also what happens at the teacher level. How, what kind of collaborative environment do we have as a staff? Is there the sense of we all are responsible for the collective group of students that we have? So we're going to have some merged in questions with the HR survey to really be able to measure that our, that our teaching staff also feels that sense of safety, supportiveness, collaborative environment, which coincides so much with all of the work that we're doing with professional learning communities as well as everything else that is part of our purview. So if we go to the next slide, I'm going to go just through a few of these different goals that fall under the umbrella of social emotional learning. We are putting in a social emotional screener next year. This is still, it's, we're implementing it, but we're still researching which tool. We've had a task force that has worked on this this year, reviewing different options. We've worked very closely with the Student Life Board Advisory to review those options, get feedback on how do we communicate this with students, teachers, parents, what information is needed? So that is all in, in development so that families will have a really strong understanding of what is the purpose of the screener? Who's going to see the information about my child? And then what happens next? What information do I receive as a parent to understand my own, my student's social emotional experiences? Next slide. Lindbergh Life Success Skills. So we still have work to do with implementing our success skills that we have started in the last year. As a reminder, these were developed in conjunction with both Student Life Board Advisory and our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. Going into this next year, we are asking a group of teachers to pilot an e-portfolio to have students reflect on how they really apply these skills in the academic setting or potentially even beyond. There might be an experience where students are, are demonstrating creativity, but it's not in the school environment. Like, how do we look at, again, the whole idea of success skills, Lindbergh Life Success Skills, is that students are transferring these skills beyond the school experience. So really continuing to, what I would say is make sure that this doesn't become a poster on a wall. How do we make the success skills a part of the DNA of our conversations and having our students think about and reflecting on their, their own development? And this coincides really closely with the work that Dr. Lawson has been doing with the Success Ready Work Group through the state. In fact, she was at a workshop yesterday where they were talking about portfolio development for students to be able to demonstrate the learning that they have in these areas. Next slide. Oh, I'm excited about this one. Okay. So this is, this is something I've just kind of been floating out to people here and there. One of the things that we are increasingly challenged by is the amount of time to really support the individual professional learning of our teachers. We talk about personalization all the time for our students. We talk about personalized professional learning for teachers. But I think one of the challenges that we have is we don't always have the clarity of what are the outcomes that we want from the professional learning. So I think we have an opportunity. If you saw, if you haven't, I highly encourage you to, the, the parent speaker series that we had earlier this week where Dr. Hamby did an incredible job talking about proficiency scales and we could see proficiency scales around what students would be expected to do in content areas. How do we create that, that same kind of system for teachers to understand what is expected of them? When we talk about high quality professional learning communities, what does that really mean? What are the, what are the markers that we can really gauge that that's, that that is a high quality professional learning community? And then when we move into professional learning, then teachers can go and work on those parts of that proficiency scale that are areas of needed improvement. So we really can start to personalize professional learning in a way that meets the needs of the district as well as the individual needs of, of teachers. So we're going to investigate how we can potentially get this moving. I think there's a lot of potential collaboration with HR and the evaluation side of this as well. So how do we kind of merge all of these pieces together? Next slide, please. All right. And here we get into the academic, our standards based instruction, our high quality student experiences, making sure we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. I know that the slide is very dense, but again, we go back and one of the things you'll note is that we are using the 80% metric for our, our data on both NWEA MAP growth as well as FastBridge and CVM assessments. I want to really point this out. Again, going back to tier one, 80% would be, you know, we, we're getting our kids there without intervention so that we want to have that as a goal. It's noteworthy that these are also plus. So we're not expecting that we're going to limit that 80% is our goal and that's the only place we want to be. It's 80% plus. We, we developed these metrics based on where we've seen our students currently. This will stretch us, this will continue to move us forward. It was interesting today, we were reading an article, NWEA MAP Growth has done research over what has happened with regards to the pandemic, with regard to student data in the pandemic. And metrics are lower than they've been pre pandemic. So we've got some work to do to continue to move that, move that marker and to grow that. So 80% is the metric we're going to use in trying to go to that and beyond. And then you'll notice on the reading benchmarks, we're focusing on third grade because we know that third grade is that pivotal time period where if students have, have really mastered those foundational reading skills, that they will be able to continue to soar in terms of meaningful learning experiences through reading. So 80% of that. And I think what's noteworthy on that particular goal is our CVM, our fluency assessment is actually beyond that already. But we need to make sure that as we continue to support foundational reading skills, that we're also supporting the, the rich comprehension skills that we expect our students to have. So that A reading also needs to be at the same marker. So we want to see both of those rising together as we continue to support student learning needs or student reading needs. And then you can go through and see the rest of these. I won't speak about all of them, but a lot of the work that we're doing, just the implementation of new programs, of proficiency scales and standards based learning experiences that we know are really the baseline for moving our students further in their learning. Next slide. All right. So here we go, the standards based elementary report card, really a big deal going into next year. I'm going to put a plug in for that parent speaker series from earlier this week as well. We'll share that out in eNotes and use snips of it throughout the course of the summer and next school year with families because it looks different. It is very much a rich piece of information though, to help parents truly understand what learning their students have mastered and what further learning they still need. So that is going to be a very heavy lift as we work with elementary teachers next year. And then we're continuing to move the needle at the secondary level with really prioritizing learning as, as the way we measure and we assess and we then report out or we essentially grade students. So we've got frameworks and guidelines in play going into next year and those continue to get expanded as we watch what we're doing at the elementary level matriculate up into the secondary level. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question about that one first?
Yeah.
Why, why does the implementation not start until November for elementary?
Because that is actually the first grading cycle. Elementary is on trimesters for next year, so officially you'll see the report card in November. Great question. All right. So implementing multi-tiered systems of support. I referenced earlier the tiers of intervention. Tier one is what students should be able to access and master through the classroom and then tiers two and three are interventions beyond that. There has been a district MTSS coalition that has happened throughout the course of this year. We are continuing that work, looking at student data, using that data to drive instruction, using that data to drive interventions for our students. So you can see, we use EduClima as kind of our data warehouse and then we're using the data from FastBridge, iReady, NWEA Classroom Assessments as well, to continue to grow student learning experiences. Next slide. Lot of continuing learning in terms of literacy. So at this point, we have all of our coaches, our reading specialists and our ELL teachers who are trained in letters. We also have the vast majority of our pilot teachers in the primary grades who are wrapping up letters training right now. By the end of next school year, we will have at minimum 50% of our primaries, primary teachers trained in letters. And just as a reminder, letters is not, it's not a quick training. It's not, we're going to pull you out for a couple of days and do this, do this, this reading training, which is based in the science of reading, brain work, phonics, phonemic awareness, morphology, all of those components that make up the foundational reading skills. This is 80 hours of professional learning for each teacher who goes through this process. So in total, some of that can be pulled out, but in total, it's about 50 to 60 hours outside of contract time when teachers are doing this. So it's the reason why it is not something that we do in just one quick hit. We have cohorts who go through and we continue to deepen and expand that experience. We also have our principals who are becoming trained through the administrative component of it. So they will do a full day of training in August of this year and then develop look force throughout the course of next year that they can use both with our pilot work for our ELA resources as well as just instructional support. And then they'll do another training next summer to continue that work. So they won't have the same level of depth that the teachers who go through 80 hours will have, but they will have that, the, the baseline to be able to support and grow and watch to ensure that those, those strands are being used or those strategies are being used in the classroom.
I just have a quick question, comment. But we chose, I was in a conversation the other day and we were talking about letters. And the reason that this was recommended is to help bridge the gap from the university where teachers, when they receive their education degree, they are not taught some of these skills in phonemic awareness and things. And so this helps bridge that gap.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah. There is not a consistent baseline for where teachers are coming to us and understanding the science of reading. I know there's some legislation currently out there that will resolve that for the future. But yeah, in the future, we may not have to continue that once we see that pattern kind of erode.
And so we've implemented it also to have current staff also trained in those areas as well.
That's our focus right now. Yes. Yes. And, and I say primary because that's, that is where the bulk of this learning happens. We've also had third grade teachers who were like, can I, can I join too? You know, people are, people have really seen the benefit of the work that we've done through the Phonics Impact Study and the use of Sunde and Hagerty resources. So there's this desire to, to do more.
Will student placement in specific classrooms be considered as to whether that a particular student might need a teacher who has already had this training as opposed to one who hasn't?
So one of the things that's nice about professional learning communities is our teachers are collaborating together. So lots of conversations are happening across, you know, across classrooms around, hey, have you tried this or here's something you can use. So even when teachers aren't going through, there's, there's still that learning experience and collaborating with partners. I don't know specifically if, if our principals are looking at that or considering that. I can tell you that, you know, as we are continuing to look at data from FastBridge and the implication of what our, of our current pilots, what that has led to, we're going to, we're going to continue to question that. We're going to look at the data from this fall and the letters teachers who have already been trained in comparison to those who have not yet had that trained to see what that impact is. So that all becomes part of that final analysis that we'll be able to talk about in, in July when we come back with the data. All right. Next slide. All right. So this is where we get, it's all fun, right? But program development is especially fun because we start to see where there are opportunities to expand personalized learning for our students. So as Beth referenced earlier, you're going to have, there's going to be another layer of details to this particular goal. But I've given a couple of examples of ways that we are continuing to do program development for college and career readiness. As you all know, we have the St. Louis Virtual Campus Collaboration. That's one option. We have Avid, which is meant to support first-time, first-generation college students in preparation for that, for that experience, which will be coming online for us as a district in the 2324 school year. Aviation is coming online next year. We have three sections of the first semester course of, of aviation. So after, after a second course, which we won't have in play until the 2324 school year, students will actually have the opportunity to be certified in drone flight. So some really exciting things. And then investigating a JROTC as well, that really probably the earliest it could be implemented, depending on what happens with our investigation, would be the 2425 school year. But really some things that we're continuing to do to, to expand programming. And then when you go to the next slide, another opportunity that is, is less, it definitely has high school components, but it's got more than this. As you know, with the purchase of the farmer's market, we have an opportunity to do something creative. So there is collaboration currently going on with the Danforth Center to look at how do we develop partnerships, how do we create a learning experience with that space that is tied to curriculum, to experiences? Had a very exciting meeting, I was not a part of it, sharing it via word of mouth, earlier this week with the Danforth Center, and how students can partner with researchers to really engage in not just science, but other contents as well. So something that I think that we are really excited to see how this evolves and develops in terms of an opportunity for kids to have a really authentic learning experience, K-12, in conjunction with that farmer's market property.
And the idea there is to keep the history of the community. So we thought, when we bought that property, how do we keep the farmer's club history there that's been a part of this community forever? And so this more modern farming aspect, the farm-to-table, the different careers, all the science that goes into farming, and just that opportunity for our kids to be exposed to that. So I felt like, we felt like our community would, I think, appreciate that, that we're looking at how can we take a historic piece of land and make education relevant and real for our students now in the 21st century? So what we're super excited about it is going to probably be part of that next no tax rate bond, to repurpose that, that space, and also, that space will also help out traffic gets sparing, too, so.
There's even conversations about geospatial skills. I mean, the conversations went, went pretty far about the different opportunities and how this partnership could really be an exciting thing for our students. It's only two minutes past six, I'll note that. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
So first, if you have any more questions about the budget or any of our compass goals, reach out to our cabinet members to clarify those, and we can now move to 5.0 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop 1553?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Matt, second by Kristy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. Board Workshop 1553 is adjourned.